December 14, 2015, council meeting in order if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in this world with liberty of each other.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Here.
Simpson. Coin.
Here.
Hilberg.
Here.
Colasar.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Ring of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of November 23, 2015, is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Discussion on the minutes. Would the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Coin.
Yes.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees. We finance met prior to the council meeting and our next meeting will be next year. We'll probably meet the 11th of January and we'll probably have a special finance meeting in the weeks to follow or that week to follow maybe for the discussion on the capital projects, which includes the pool discussion. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. Publics Property Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting held and nothing to report.
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson, he's not here. Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colzar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. We have 15-194, payment over $3,000 to Osborne. 15-195, public defender contract renewal. 15-196, membership withdrawal fee for the MCRC. 15-197, fund transfer for the parking fund. 15-198, fund advances for the grant funds. 15-199, budget amendments. 15-200, expenditure over $15,000 for Video Service of America. 15-201, Capitol Bell request for parking garage. 15-202, amending Section 14201 regarding Cemetery Commission. And 15-203, increased PO 2015-561 for Osborne Medina. Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Post Newspapers in partnership with the Medina Chamber, Main Street Medina and the City Medina hosted the first annual Shop Medina, November 1st through 30th. And then on December 5th at the Rock Center, they had the receipts were turned in for tickets and on the pool for the prizes, they had almost $9,000 in prizes donated. I was present for that event on December 5th and they had about 350 attendees and that were then awarded a variety of prizes. The most, the last prize was the most expensive, about an $800 snow blower was given to a local resident here as a result of shopping in Medina. So they saw it as very successful and hoped to build on it for next year. On December 2nd, the Lorraine County Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Office opened up in the 700 block of East Washington Street. It was well attended by public officials as well as some of the clients that they serve and is present now to provide opiate addiction services to constituents in need. Rather than call it Lakata, which is Lorraine County, they're calling it the Medina Wellness Center. Ohio Attorney General Mike DeWine issued a warning of IRS imposter scams throughout the state. They're recommending that the public not call back if they get a robocall that generally threatens to sue or arrest if for unpaid taxes. And if they actually answer the phone, not to engage the callers or get into a Q and A with them. These scams can be reported to the U.S. Treasury or IRS Treasury Inspector General for Tax Administration. And that may be on the screen for those watching at home, but the website is at www.treasury.gov/tig as in George, T as in Tom, A as in Adam. And or you can call 1-800-366-4484. Today is Kathy Patton's birthday and I'd like to wish her a happy birthday and nothing better than a meeting other than a party with family, right?
Happy birthday to you as well, Mayor.
Thank you. And last but not least, this is, as Mr. Coin, President Coin said, last meeting of the year. I'd just like to personally wish the council members, the staff and the community a Merry Christmas and a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. And happy birthday, I was going to bring it up at the end, but apparently everybody's wishing happy birthday early. Yeah, well, there you go. So wish happy birthday to everybody, maybe even myself, maybe I didn't have my birthday though. But anyways, Mr. Durham, Director Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to echo your comments, happy birthday to Mayor Hamwell and Council Clerk Patton. There's the budgets on this agenda tonight as well as a number of transfers and advances and year-end items and I'll address those when we get there.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, City Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Baraducci, please chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Neither do I.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one item to note, the City Medina in conjunction with Main Street Medina and the Chamber of Commerce are hosting another grand opening and ribbon cutting for Honeybee Bakery and they are located at 23 Public Square, Suite Number One. That'll be this Friday at 4:00 PM and she is in the space that was formerly known as the Bakery Shop. So if you're able to attend, we'd love to see you there. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one thing, as a reminder, the Forestry Department issued a work permit on November 18th for Ohio Edison Company to perform utility vegetation management along four distribution circuits in the City of Medina. The streets affected include Industrial Parkway, Lake Road, Hartford Drive, Worcester Pike, Ryan Road, South Broadway Street, Lafayette Road, Wadsworth Road, Plymouth Street, Blanett Street, LaSalle Street and West Sterbridge Drive. The residents and businesses along these streets should have been contacted already in person or received a door hanger from Ohio Edison Company. The work will involve pruning of public and privately owned trees in close proximity to primary and secondary distribution lines. It'll be performed by Asplin Tree Expert Company and will commence after January 1st, 2016. Any questions about the work should be directed to the telephone number you received on the bottom of the door hanger, which is 330-323-9232. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gladish, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's now been a year since the Building Department took over the plumbing permit responsibilities from the county. I would like to say it's been a success and very beneficial to the community. We have issued over 100 residential and 35 commercial plumbing permits. I would also like to say that providing this additional service has not been an added cost to the city. The permit fees collected has and will continue to cover the cost of labor, both in the field and in the office, all required tools and reference materials. This ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. Just remembered the birthday. City Engineer.
Thank you. Wanted to get an update on Ryan Road. That project is underway. We have completed mainline installation of the water main. This is on Ryan between Lafayette and Sterbridge, West Sterbridge. The main line is completed. We are this week starting the installation of individual services to all the houses and also they're starting the storm sewer this week. Thank you.
Happy birthday to the wife. Happy birthday Kathy. Pat forgot to mention it.
Thank you, Nina.
And to Mayor Hamwell. I won't be talking about the leaf hotline tonight. The leaf program's over. It was very successful. There are a few people that didn't realize the program ended. However, we're asking the residents to bag whatever minimal leaves are out there. Weather's been phenomenal. It's great without snow and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piccoli. Great, great report. Confirmation of mayoral appointments. Okay, we have a lot of them here. For the Airport Commission, Ed Farnham for a term expiring 12/31/19. Brian Gushen for a term expiring 12/31/19. The Archive Commission, Roger Smalley for a term expiring 12/31/18. Board of Zoning Appeals, Mark Williams for a term expiring 12/31/19. Charter Review Commission, Mike Ryan for a term expiring 12/31/20. Stacy Bonnet's, term expiring 12/31/20. Mike Jenks, expiring 12/31/20. Elizabeth Buck's, term expiring 12/31/20. Mildred Medley, term expiring 12/31/20. Historic Preservation Board, Leslie Travis, term expiring 12/31/19. Paula Banks, term expiring 12/31/19. Shade Tree Commission, Virginia Jendervin, expiring 12/31/19. And Utility Rate Review Commission, Andrea Lyons, term expiring 12/31/19.
Move to confirm the mayor's appointments.
Second. Discussion or comments on the mayor's appointments. Would the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the mayor's appointments.
Hilberg.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Confirmation of council appointments. We have the MCDAC McDAC Board, Bob Starcher for a term expiring 12/31/17. The Archive Commission, Matt Reederhold for a term expiring 12/31/18. The Audit Committee, Bert Humple, Accounting Representative for a term expiring 12/31/19.
Move to confirm the council appointments.
Second. Any discussion on the council appointments? Will clerk please call the roll on the council appointments.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Notice of Communications and Protions, we have a few liquor permits, not to object to a transfer of a C1 and C2 permit from Stop &amp; Go of Medina, Inc., 828 West Liberty Street to TA Operating LLC, doing business as minute mark, 828 West Liberty Street, First Floor.
Move not to object.
Second. Discussion on not to object to the liquor permit. Clerk, please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
We have a motion not to object to a transfer of a C1 and C2 permit from Stop &amp; Go of Medina, Inc., doing business as Stop &amp; Go, 1033 South Court Street, to TA Operating LLC, doing business as minute mark, 1033 South Court Street.
Move not to object.
Second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Finally, a motion not to object to a transfer of a C2 and C2X permit from Stop &amp; Go of Medina, Inc., doing business as Stop &amp; Go, Number 99, 1010 West Lafayette Road, to TA Operating LLC, doing business as minute mark, 1010 West Lafayette Road.
Move not to object.
Second. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
On finished business, we have done introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue of concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to induction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair in a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Erica?
Thank you, Mr. President. Erica Graffin representing the Auditor's Office. I have three reminders tonight. We just had our Top Dog essay contest winners presented last week and that is to kick off the deadline for the dog licensing. Need to renew dog licenses before January 31st. The fee is $10 again this year. If you miss that deadline, they double the fee. In mid-January, our seal contest winners are going to be spotlighted on the website and that's at medinacountyauditor.org. And lastly, tax bills will be mailed out the middle of January with a due date before the middle of February. That's all.
Thanks for the news. I don't know if all this is good news, but thanks for that. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance one, oh. Is there anybody else that wants to address council? I didn't think there was. Introduction and consideration of ordinance resolutions. Ordinance 15015, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Medina Township for the purpose of providing 911 emergency police dispatch and communication services on behalf of the residents of the township.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a, excuse me, contract for dispatch services for our dispatch center in the Police Department for Medina Township, Police and Fire. We've had these contracts in place. This is a renewal for another three years, an increase in some of the fees that they're paying us for that and it's a great collaborative effort between us and the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Would the clerk please call the roll on the ordinance.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Ordinance 151-15, ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Montville Township for the purpose of providing 911 emergency police dispatch and communication services on behalf of the residents of the township.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
Once again, on this ordinance, the emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and ordinance. Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. As with the prior, and I forgot to mention that, the reason for the emergency clause is this takes effect at the end of the month, so we'd like it in place rather than the 30-day wait so that it's ready January 1st. With Montville, we don't do fire because the City Fire Department provides fire services for them, which is another collaboration between the City and Montville Township. So their dispatch contract is just between Montville Police and the City of Medina. And again, it's been in place for a number of years and this is a three-year extension of that contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Ordinance 151-15, excuse me, passes six zero.
Resolution 15215, a resolution of council of the City of Medina, Medina County, State of Ohio, certifying that when a municipal obligation was incurred, sums were lawfully appropriated and the funds to satisfy the obligation and sufficient sums currently exist to satisfy this obligation according to the attached sheets.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the resolution and the emergency clause. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. These are parts for a concrete pour and the emergency clause is requested because we've already received them and need to get this vendor paid.
Thank you. Any further discussion on a resolution or the emergency clause? Clerk, please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Resolution 152-15 passes six zero.
Ordinance 15315, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a ground lease agreement between the City of Medina and the Miracle League of Northeast Ohio, Inc., for the Medina Lions Field at Sam Massey Park.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ground lease at Medina Lions Miracle Field located at Sam Massey Park gives the exclusive use of the baseball field to the Miracle League of Northeast Ohio Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) for the next 10 years. The Miracle League provides recreational support and opportunities for individuals with physical and mental disabilities. The league utilizes custom-designed facilities with cushioned ADA compliance surfaces and the Miracle League has committed to renovating the playing surface at Medina Lions Field and the use of the field by individuals or organizations other than the Miracle League would be inconsistent with the purpose for which the field was built. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. President.
Mr. Colzar.
Just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody in the Miracle League organization and it's, like Jansen said, it's located in Sam Massey Park, which is over in Ward 3. And if I urge city residents or whoever's listening, haven't had a chance to know about the Miracle League and what they do, take some time this coming summer and come out and watch a couple of games. It's, every once in a while, I'll walk through the park, sit down and watch a couple of games and the energy that the league provides to everybody that's involved is so positive for this community and it's truly an asset within our neighborhoods and thank you for all your work.
Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 153-15 passes six zero.
Ordinance 154-15, or repealing ordinance number 7815, passed June 8th, 2015, and replacing Section 16113 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the allocation of income tax funds.
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the emergency clause is because this will take effect January 1st, 2016. The ordinance is to reallocate the income tax. As you know, this grew out of the budget discussions. We need to deal with some shortages in the upcoming years and this is how we're dealing with them. We're rearranging how we allocate the income tax and this will address those issues.
Thank you. And I'd like to do a follow-up and like to thank the department heads and the administration for coming up and working with council to determine a way to reallocate the funds for various departments and other parks departments. The Recreation Department took a big hit and also the 108 account, which is Patrick Patton's funding for the roads to help the 102 account. And by this allocation, I think we've done everything we can do in the near future to ensure that the funding of the various departments and the funding of the city services to our community residents is hopefully good through the year 2020. And beyond that point, we don't know what's going to happen and nor do we know if the state would enact any further legislation which would impact our funding of these departments. And we're hopeful that through the near term, we are going to be solvent and in the black. And coming after 2020, we're not sure, but we're going to be looking at ways to create additional funding beyond those years. And hopefully, we won't have to raise taxes greatly, but at some point, expenses always exceeds revenues because for some reason in this world, expenses increase at a greater rate than revenue. But at home, I think we all know that. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Would the clerk please call the roll on the emergency clause.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk, please call the roll on the ordinance.
Hilbert.
Yes.
Colasar.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hilbert. Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 152-15 passes six zero.
Ordinance 15315, ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a ground lease agreement between the City of Madana and the Miracle League of Northeast Ohio, Inc., for the Madana Lions Field at San Massey Park.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ground lease at Madana Lions Miracle Field located at San Massey Park gives the exclusive use of the baseball field to the Miracle League of Northeast Ohio, Incorporated, a 501(c)(3) for the next 10 years. The Miracle League provides recreational support and opportunities for individuals with physical and mental disabilities. The league utilizes custom-designed facilities with cushioned ADA-compliant surfaces, and the Miracle League has committed to renovating the playing surface at Madana Lions Field and the use of the field by individuals or organizations other than the Miracle League would be inconsistent with the purpose for which the field was built. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the ordinance?
Mr. President?
Mr. Coltsar?
Just want to take a moment to thank everybody in the Miracle League organization, and it's, like Jansen said, it's located in San Massey Park, which is over in Ward Three, and if I urge city residents or whoever's listening, haven't had a chance to know about the Miracle League and what they do, take some time this coming summer and come out and watch a couple games. It's, every once in a while, I'll walk through the park, sit down, and watch a couple games, and the energy that the league provides to everybody that's involved is so positive for this community, and it's truly an asset within our neighborhoods, and thank you for all your work.
Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the role in the ordinance.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 153-15 passes six zero.
Ordinance 154-15, ordinance repealing ordinance number 7815 passed June 8th, 2015, and replacing section 16113 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Madana, Ohio relative to the allocation of income tax funds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause.
Durham. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, the emergency clause is because this will take effect January 1st, 2016. The ordinance is to reallocate the income tax. As you know, this grew out of the budget discussions. We need to deal with some shortages in the upcoming years, and this is how we're dealing with them. We're rearranging how we allocate the income tax, and this will address those issues.
Thank you, and I'd like to do a follow-up and like to thank the department heads and the administration for coming up and working with council to determine a way to reallocate the funds from various departments and other the Parks Department and Recreation Department took a big hit, and also the 108 account, which is Patrick Patton's funding for the roads to help the 102 account. And by this allocation, I think we've done everything we can do in the near future to ensure that the funding of the various departments and the funding of the city's services to our community residents is hopefully good through the year 2020. And beyond that point, we don't know what's going to happen, and nor do we know if the state would enact any further legislation which would impact our funding of these departments, and we're hopeful that through the near term, we are going to be solvent in the black. And coming after 2020, we're not sure, but we're going to be looking at ways to create additional funding beyond those years, and hopefully, we won't have to raise taxes greatly, but at some point, expenses always exceeds revenues because for some reason in this world, expenses increase at a greater rate than revenue. But at home, I think we all know that. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Clerk please call the role in the emergency clause.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk please call the role in the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Clerk please call the role in the ordinance.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 153-15 passes six zero.
Ordinance 153-15, ordinance authorizing the finance director to make certain fund transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is due to the fact that the state passed what was known as House Bill 5, which changes the way that cities can collect income tax. We have to pass this ordinance in order to be in compliance with it. The emergency clause is requested because it takes effect January 1st, 2016. This is not repealing the old ordinance because the prior ordinance will still be in effect for tax years ending 2015 and prior. It will, this new ordinance will be for tax years 2016 and beyond. The major change, other than what the state forced us, the only other change we made was that the city changed the minimum age threshold on income tax so that starting with 2016, persons aged 17 and 16 and 17 will no longer be subject to the tax. City residents won't. Other than that, most of this is just to comply. I'd like to thank Mr. Huber's office. The law director had to review a lot of this and get that over, and we have to adopt it to comply with the state ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or comment on the ordinance?
Mr. President?
Mr. Worley?
While I agree with portions of the requirements that we, where we had to change because of state law, there is one section here that I do disagree with, and I will be voting no on the entire ordinance because we don't have line item, and that is because of the exclusion of the 16 and 17-year-olds for the income tax. It's been estimated that the taxes that we collect from those people are between $10,000 and $15,000, so let's pick the midpoint at $12,000, just for conversation. Okay? It's a significant amount of money. We've been told that the other two cities in the county do not collect the taxes, but they tax at a higher rate than we do, number one. Number two, they don't bring the thousands of people to their squares, to their events, as we do on multiple occasions. The $12,000 in a couple of cases, I've checked with department heads, $12,000 will cover approximately a half of the solid application around the city during a monitor to heavy snowfall, approximately half. Okay? It'll take approximately, $12,000 is approximately 20% of the operating cost of the swimming pool for a year, should we adopt that. The $12,000 would cover all of the police overtime that the police spent so far this year covering events on the square. And last but not least, it'll cover two councilman salaries for the year. Okay? So I will be voting no on this ordinance.
For one president.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or comment?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
Although I agree with many of the things Mr. Rose said, and I had my chance to vote no because of the 16 and 17-year-old issue with the income tax, I just wanted to support what Mr. Rose said. Though I will vote yes tonight because I, there are several parts of this ordinance that I do agree with, and I don't want to cause any problems with it not passing, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Hilberg?
For the same reasons, I'm going to vote yes for it because I agree with the ordinance as a whole, but I don't agree with the same issue that Mr. Shields and Mr. Rose pointed out.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Lamb?
I'm going to vote yes for it because I do agree with the entire, with the entire piece of legislation. I understand the money issue that Councilman Rose brought up. However, I believe that each dollar that stays in the pocket of any of these youngsters will go around five times within the community, and that actually is more of a benefit, I believe, and a benefit to the youngsters that earn it than if they were to lose that through the tax. Secondly, you have to file, I think, to get that money back, and a great percentage of them may not file to get it back anyway. So I think that the impact on the city will be less. The possible impact on the individual youngsters who take it upon themselves to get jobs will be more by possibly having this money in their pocket. Thank you.
Thank you.
I almost feel like I got a comment now. I'm going to support this, and I feel that this gives the 16 and 17-year-olds a temporary break in life because once they turn 18, they are engulfed with taxes for almost the rest of their life, so why not give them a break now? Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I guess, I think that you'll know that I'll vote for it. I think that the House Bill 5 issues, of course, are important. The issue, whether or not a 16, 17-year-old should pay taxes, I guess I'm for not having them pay taxes. I think you mentioned, everybody mentioned, the reasons why they should or shouldn't. Of course, they do have to file a return to get their refund, but again, looking back as a 16 and 17-year-old, having a job, I view that they would use that money in the community to go out, maybe before a football game, buy some clothes, maybe even buy a computer for school, but we'll have to see if that happens. But after that, I think we've all commented this to death, so. Clerk please call the role in the emergency clause.
Rose?
No.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Motion passes five yays, one nay.
Clerk please call the role in the ordinance.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
No.
Shields?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilberg?
Yes.
Colossar?
Yes.
Ordinance 155-15 passes five yays, one abstention.
Resolution 156-15, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements with the Madana County Commissioners and the Madana County Public Defender's Commission so as to provide legal counsel to indigent persons charged with a violation of the city's ordinances.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
Second, adding the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. The State of Ohio statutes require that cities enter into agreement with the county public defender's office when they are representing an indigent defendant charged with the violation of a city ordinance. This contract is the same contract we have each year, but we are required to have a contract renewed every year, and so now this is before the council. It's an emergency as we need to have it adopted first of January.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk please call the role in the resolution.
Colossar?
I mean, emergency clause, I'm sorry.
Colossar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.